Good evening, the date is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. I'd like to call to order the October meeting of the Council on Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. Marilla, if you please, call the roll.
So, at large members, Councilmember Greg Burnett.
Present.
Councilmember Josh Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Johan Rokas.
Here.
Councilmember Nora Miljelski-Aichner.
Present.
Councilmember Barbara Smith.
Here.
Okay, District A, Councilmember Nicole Ayers, present. Councilmember Jaylon Seed.
Present.
Okay, District B, Councilmember Jaron Wiggins. District B, still, Councilmember Darlene Young.
Here.
District C, Councilmember Nicole Edie, here. District D, Councilmember Heather Dunn.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Doug Sutton.
Present.
And last, District E, Councilmember James Frayer. And Councilmember Lisa Shanahan.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Now, the next item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes, the regular meeting, September 24th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have public participation. You have, when your name is called, you'll have three minutes to speak on an item that is on our agenda. Ms. Obachowski, Elsa Obachowski, please state your address and your name for the record.
My name is Elsa Peterson Obachowski, and I live at 41 East Avenue. I am the Chair of the Board of Commissioners of the First Taxing District. And I come before you motivated by my responsibility to my constituents and as a concerned Norwalk citizen. In my view, the reapportionment plan before you falls short of the duty to, quote, "use best efforts to include the boundary lines of the taxing districts as defined in the Charter within a single council district where practicable." By splitting a large portion of District A1 into District C2, the plan presented to you splits the First Taxing District needlessly. Moreover, it divides those to the east and south of the Norwalk Green, including City Hall, from the Green. This is a historical community of interest that should be honored. My fellow board members and I are concerned that putting First Taxing District residents into District C would cause confusion for voters, extra work for poll workers, uncertainty about Common Council and Board of Education representations, and complaints along the lines of, "Who decided this? Nobody asked me." The First Taxing District Legal Council provided a letter on October 3rd, which you've probably seen, outlining potential legal and practical issues involved. This legal analysis may be helpful for the city attorneys, as they may opt to agree with those positions or refute them. I emailed you this afternoon, and I have here the map provided by Democratic Registrar of Voters, Stuart Wells. This was provided to the reapportionment Advisory Committee and Arc Bridge Consultants in July. And the plan shown on this map would keep the First Taxing District boundaries consistent with Districts A1 and A2, while shifting population of Districts A3 and A4 to remedy the population imbalance that is the impetus for reapportionment. And as you know, Districts A3 and A4 are the only areas of District A that fall outside the First Taxing District. My fellow board members and I believe that this proposal, at least in concept, makes the most sense, because it will leave the taxing district boundaries within District A. This concept should be capable of implementation, perhaps in a modified form, using census block or census data. I understand that there has not yet been a legal opinion on whether or not by law census blocks must be followed in municipal reapportionment. I urge the Common Council to seek a legal opinion on this question. Regardless of the outcome of that question, I urge the Common Council to give careful consideration
Two minutes and thirty seconds.
to the method illustrated by the attached map, which would keep the First Taxing District wholly within District A, while shifting population from Districts A3 and A4 to improve the population balance that is the goal of the reapportionment. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment, and may I submit this to the record?
Thank you, Ms. Obachowski. Todd Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I haven't been in a meeting like this for a long time, with actual humans, same room. So I'm Todd Bryant. I live at 23 Morgan Avenue. I'm the President of the Norwalk Preservation Trust. And I'm here to support the ideas brought forth by Ms. Obachowski. The, this, the First Taxing District in the center of District A are the remains of the old city of Norwalk, which was dissolved in the 20s, in the 1913 consolidation of all the various cities and fire districts and everything else in Norwalk. So they are very, the First Taxing District being in the center of District A is not a mistake. There's a reason it was done that way. It's important to Norwalk's history, and I think that that fact should not be ignored. Not to mention that Mr. Wells has come up with a really good alternative that does not affect the center of the District A and does, and at the same time, does what reapportionment is supposed to do. So I submit that you should use the, the, the expertise of the consultant rather than, rather than dismantling historic Norwalk, to use it to fine tune Mr. Wells' ideas and get it right for us, not for some, a algorithm that somehow uses census tracts, which really don't make any sense in this case. So, thank you very much. I hope you take that to heart.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Wells, Stuart Wells.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and Council, Stuart Wells, 224 West Norwalk Road. I'm here in my capacity as Registrar of Voters, and a member of the, a member, a non-voting member of the committee. There are many ways, obviously, that you can, that the committee could move things around so the districts were in the proper size. But they have somehow decided, based on what the consultant says, with no basis in law, what I can find, that they have to follow census block lines. When you do that, you greatly restrict the possibilities, and you create dwarf precincts of a hundred people or less in several places around town, depending on how they flip them, and in completely unrelated places. So, for instance, the census block that extends from Lawrence to Dock Road is one census block. It's partly, it's part in the Second Taxing District, and of course, part in District E. You'd have to put it in one of them, assuming they put it in E, which is what they're doing. You now create a voting situation with the people on Lawrence, and for many of them, but they'd have to have their own ballot and their own, their own ability to vote separately. It's expensive. It's silly if you don't have to do it. I urge you very strongly to get an opinion of Council about whether this is truly required or not. Obviously, I'm not a lawyer in Connecticut, although I am in Minnesota and New York. But I don't find in my knowledge anything in the statutes, and no one presented anything that required the use of the block lines, as opposed to the data itself in terms of ethnicity and numbers of voters. It would be greatly, if we adopt that without an opinion, you're also restricting all future efforts to do something, as they will now have to have these odd lines and odd precincts created. We don't have the storage space for more precincts. We need more tabulators. State provides them, but we need more cabinets, more electronic equipment, and all sorts of problems in training, because nobody wants to work in a precinct that size. And we don't exactly pay princely wages for our poll workers. A lot of them do it in part, at least.
Two minutes and thirty seconds.
For our civic duty, and they don't feel the same feeling when no one comes to vote, especially after, in the future, we get no excuse absentee voting too, and you'll even further reduce the number that will come. I have a detailed writing. On the panel, I was invited as an analyst. I don't know if you want me to stay or...
You can give it to James, and he'll distribute it. James, up here.
Yeah, I mean, just throw that in there.
Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. James, is there anybody online wishing to address the Council?
If you wish to address the Council, please raise your hand electronically at this time. They're down at this time.
Nobody? Okay, we'll close public session, public participation, and we will go to the mayor's section. Resignations and appointments, we only have one. We have a reappointment for Alice McQuade for the Norwalk Transit District. Can I have a motion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move for the reappointment of Alice McQuade to the Norwalk Transit District. Can you speak to that?
Please.
Thank you. Alice McQuade is a seasoned family lawyer, law attorney, who has established her law office over 25 years ago, and continues to be a well-respected professional and influencer in the legal sector. Alice contributes her time and resources to support several organizations and events here in the city of Norwalk. And we are really fortunate to have her level of experience on the Norwalk Transit District to ensure public transit services are met and exceeded for all Norwalk residents. Alice's willingness to continue to serve on the Norwalk Transit District is greatly appreciated and welcome, and I wholeheartedly support her reappointment.
Further comment? I have a comment. About four years ago, Alice, maybe five, Alice agreed to come on the Transit District temporarily, so. Seeing no further comment, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have comments from the mayor. Today, an exciting day in the city of Norwalk. We did the topping off ceremony at the new South Norwalk School. Joined by many state, local, and school officials, city leaders, also common council members. The Council President, Ms. Young, was there. Council members, Ms. Smith, Mr. Burnett, and Mr. Sutton were all there. It was an exciting day. So if you remember back in April, a lot of us met there for a groundbreaking, and it's amazing how quickly this is moving forward. They always say that when government is involved in a project, it usually takes twice as long and costs twice as much, but this is not the case. This is the case where it's moving forward, and if I heard correctly, they're coming in ahead of time and under budget. So this is a good news for the city of Norwalk. It's our first new construction in over forty, under the 60% savings that the city will be getting now for reimbursement from the state. We used to get somewhere around 22.5%. Now, with a bill put in, put forth by Senator Duff, we will be getting 60% of reimbursement for all the schools, and our 25-year plan will save the taxpayers in the city of Norwalk millions and millions of dollars. We also talked about today about the safe routes to school, and we know that a lot of common council members have expressed their concerns about young people walking to school, walking to the South Norwalk School. Well, we want to address that. We had Jim Travers there. We're going to be putting a roundabout down in the area. We've got $2.5 million for that. We're going to be fixing the sidewalks. We're going to be making things a lot safer. We're going to do a complete streets program. So we're going to do what we can to make that as safe as it possibly can be for not only students walking, but some students taking the bus, parents dropping the children off. So next, flu shots. Everybody's reminded to get their flu shot. It's unfortunately, the flu season is approaching this Thursday, October 10th, from 10 until 12. The Norwalk Health Department will be holding several, starting that, that day. We'll be holding several community flu clinics in our building right next to City Hall. All of the upcoming dates will be listed on our website. Appointments are required for the clinics, but get your flu shot so that you can live a healthy year here. National Fire Prevention Week, this is National Fire Prevention Week. Norwalk's Fire Department is promoting this year's campaign, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. The mission is to ensure that there are working smoke alarms in every residence, and we want to thank the Fire Marshal's Office for offering free age-appropriate, age-appropriate fire prevention seminars throughout the community in honor of National Fire Prevention Week. Continuing with the Fire Department, we have sent a firefighter and equipment down to North Carolina to help with the cleanup and recovery from Hurricane Helene. They brought Fairfield County Hazmat Vehicle Communications Unit, a regional asset that is stationed in Westport, known as FieldCom. They also brought a, an ATV and a Fire Department Utility Truck to help navigate the roads that have been made non-navigable by, by the storm. This announcement follows Governor Lamott's decision to deploy an urban search and rescue team to help with the efforts. And we also know right now with Hurricane Milton that just reached a category five and is approaching Florida. We want, our hearts and prayers are with the residents of Florida and the rest of the areas where Milton may pass, and we're asking, or we're hoping that the residents there pay heed to the instructions of the government, find safety, evacuate if necessary, especially in areas that are prone to flooding. With Mr. Wells here, we will announce that there are 14 days of early voting prior to the November 5th general election. Norwalk residents come to Norwalk City Hall and vote in person. It'll be October, Monday, October 21st, and goes through Sunday, November 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that includes weekends. City Hall will also have an extended early voting hours on Tuesday, October 29th, and Thursday, October 31st. You can vote from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and if you wish, you can register here at City Hall at that time. Lastly, we're having, and I'm excited about it, I hope everybody else is, I know the kids in Norwalk are. We're having our second annual Nightmare on Washington Street. Halloween Nightfare is Saturday, October 26th, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It's a family-friendly event. There'll be pumpkin painting, bouncing houses, games, a truck, a trick-or-treat trail, and a chance to meet the Sanderson Sisters from Disney's Hocus Pocus. And it will also include a variety of bands and DJ performances for the evening. That's all I have, and I will turn the meeting over to our Common Council President, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, under 5A General Business, one, acknowledgement of receipt of redistricting 2024 proposed plan, map, and recommendations for redistricting opportunities after each census, each as accepted by the reapportionment advisory committee. We are just acknowledging that the work that was done by...
Just going to recuse myself. No, I don't think you have to recuse yourself for this. There's no vote. There's just acknowledging receipt. Yeah, right?
Right, that's fine. Yeah.
But if he wants to recuse himself.
We're not going to talk about it. I don't think we're talking about anything, right?
We're not talking about anything. There's no votes being taken.
No vote acknowledged. But we wanted to acknowledge the work that has been done. It's a lot of work to go through, and we did not have the proper time to go through that, which is why we will be sending this on to the Public Safety and General Government Committee of the Council. So we want to acknowledge that we did receive it. We've looked at it, and we've got more that we need to do. Okay, there are no resignations. Another announcement, the first meeting of the newly formed Turner Revision Commission will be on October 16th. Correct, right? And we've named Tyler Fairbain as the Chair and Doug Hempstead as the Vice Chair. And again, we thank all those members for agreeing to participate on that level with us. But our next council meeting, on October 22nd, there will be a presentation on the economic outlook for the city by the Chamber of Commerce, and we're looking forward to that as well. And we're doing that, and that will be under the economic and community development. Moving on, the consent. Nora.
Could you also remind us that we have a charter, we have a public hearing on the charter?
Thank you. Councilmember Miljelski-Aichner reminded me that, to remind everyone, that there will be a public hearing on October 29th. And so we are excited to get this going and encourage all residents to share their comments either in person or in writing. We move on to reading of the consent calendar, and that will be done by Councilmember Holton.
6A. Authorized the Mayor, Harry W. Willing to Execute an On-Call Agreement for Appraisal Services with Vemini Associates.
One second.
Sorry. So when we go on to 5, 6, reports, department boards and commissions under Corporation Council. We don't have to go into executive session until...
Or number, which one?
My understanding is that you want to vote to take number 3 out of order and to move that to the end.
Because I guess 3 and below, the, that's what you want to talk about in executive session?
My understanding is that...
What are you saying, Nora?
No, no.
No, my understanding was that you wanted to suspend the rules and make a motion to move 6A 3 to the end of the agenda and for an executive session. I believe that's what you intended to do. So at this time, you may want to make that motion and go back to the reading.
Okay, so as we move on to 6, Corporation Council, we make a motion to move item 3 to the end of the agenda and executive session.
Motion been made on the floor, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, and now we'll return to Ms. Edie.
All right, Ms. Edie. 6A1, authorize the Mayor, Harry W. Willing, to execute an on-call agreement for appraisal services with Vemini Associates. Three-year initial term with two options to extend for a period of one year each, for some not to exceed $130,000 in year 1, $160,000 in year 2, and $130,000 in year 3, account number noted. Authorized, 6A2, authorize the Mayor, Harry W. Willing, to execute an on-call agreement for appraisal services with Karen and Fazio. Three-year initial term with two options to extend for a period of one year each, for some not to exceed $120,000 in year 1, $140,000 in year 2, and $120,000 in year 3, account number noted. 7A1, technical correction. Authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to GovConnection Inc. in an amount not to exceed $385,223.54 for network distribution and access switches, account number noted. B2. Authorize the purchasing agent to authorize a sole-source purchase order for Carville Inc., retreated road salt.
Did you skip one? Finance is...
Original approved action, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to GovConnection Inc. in an amount not to exceed $385,223.54 for network distribution and access switches, account number noted. B2. Authorize the purchasing agent to authorize a sole-source purchase order to Carville Inc. for treated road salt for snow and ice control, pricing not to exceed $115 per ton for normal and after-hour deliveries effective for the 2024-25 snow season, account number noted. B3. Authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to conduct all the necessary alterations and improvements on scenic roads, Phillou Street, West Norwalk Road to Richards Avenue, as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 7th, 2024. B4. A, authorize the Mayor, Harry W. Willing, to execute an agreement with Scholar Painting LLC for Project BR2024-1, Perry Avenue Bridge Rail Painting. Perry Avenue over the Silver Mine River for a sum not to exceed $121,819.80, account numbers noted. I don't know if I'm reading this right, so excuse me. Authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to execute orders on the College of Paintings LLC for Project BR2024-1, Perry Avenue Bridge Rail Painting, Perry Avenue over Silver Mine River, for a sum not to exceed $12,181.98, account numbers noted. C. Land Use and Building Management, C1, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Gabriella Truck Sales of Milford as a sole-source vendor for a 2024 F450 refrigerated box truck, for a total not to exceed $135,000, account number noted. C2, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Southwest, Southwestern Stringed Instruments Inc., Project 4394, new string instruments for Norwalk Middle and High School, in the amount of $302,268.85, account number noted. C3. Authorize the Mayor, Harry W. Willing, to execute an agreement with Tri-State Holding Partitions Inc. as a sole-source vendor for the replacement of the stage divider at Marvin Elementary School for a total not to exceed $69,975, account number noted. C4, authorize security specialists at Division of Alert Systems LLC as our authorized service and installation representative for security access and CCTV at the various municipal properties to include, but not limited to Norwalk City Hall, Norwalk Police Department, and Norwalk Health Department. This concludes the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Edie. And thank you. Great job. It wasn't your turn. You were put on the spot, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Edie.
Yes, Madam President, just one on readiness. On item 7A1, the technical correction, needs to also include that $250,000 from the offer account number, as noted, should be part of that technical correction.
So, she just didn't read it. Do we need to read it again? I think we've made note of that, so we will...
I think it's part of the record.
Yeah, the technical, it should be, the minute should reflect what is printed in the agenda, not what was written. And everything that's printed in the agenda is correct.
Yep, okay.
So, you've heard the consent calendar as read by Councilmember Ms. Edie, with the corrections that noted. Opposed, second read. All right.
Thank you. That brings us to item 7B1. In the absence of Mr. Frayer, I understand Ms. Smith will lead us off with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1, Presentation of the Solid Waste Strategic Plan Updated by the Managing Partners at New Gen. Allison Trulock will be providing that presentation for us. And what I'd like to do is first turn it over to our Chief of Public Works, Vanessa Valaderas, who has been leading the examination of our waste strategic plan. New Gen has been working with the Public Works Department for about a year now, I believe, to look at this and provide this presentation. So I'll turn it over to Vanessa then.
Thank you so much, Chairman Smith. Good evening, everyone. And as I was there, probably a couple of months ago, right after you approved the RFP related to the new contract for the solid waste, I mentioned that as soon as we advance and our consultant will be able to look and evaluate the RFP, we're going to come back in front of the council so they can do a presentation about it. So we have engaged New Gen about a year ago, a little over a year ago. They have been working with us throughout... They have been working with us throughout this time, and I don't want to further do, I want to introduce to you Allison Trulock. We have a presentation and she will take from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. And good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me, and I am going to attempt to share my screen. So hopefully you can also see a PowerPoint slide deck. Again, thank you for your time tonight to give you an update on the solid waste strategic plan. What I want to do tonight is give you a very quick overview of the project. Vanessa mentioned we've been working on this for quite a while, so do that, and then also give an overview of the current solid waste system. I want to move through those first two topics rather quickly so we can spend more of our time tonight talking about the key opportunities and issues that have been identified, the strategies that we've evaluated, and then wrap up with the recommended strategies for the strategic plan. So with that, there's kind of two main parts to the project that we've been working on. One part is the strategic plan. So with the strategic planning effort, it starts with the baseline understanding. That allows us to identify the potential changes. Then we want to evaluate the potential changes, find the best options, and then get to the development of the implementation plan or the actual strategic plan itself. So that's the point where we are. We're in the, ready to finalize and develop that strategic plan. Another key part of our project, working with the city, was to assist with the procurement. And what became evident as we were identifying those opportunities and issues and potential strategies is that it would actually be a benefit to the city to pause the strategic plan, work on the procurement so we could get some, you know, definitive answers to some of the questions we had. So that's what we did. We paused the strategic plan. Back in April, we focused on getting the procurement developed. May and June went through that process. As you know, in July, we had those contracts awarded. And now we've turned our attention back to the strategic plan. Again, I want to just quickly go through an overview of the current system, just to kind of give you some comparison for the opportunities and issues we identified and the strategies that we are evaluating. I'll start at the state level. So the state of Connecticut does have a diversion goal of sixty percent by twenty twenty-four. The state knows it's not going to reach sixty percent by twenty twenty-four, but that had been the goal. Some of the main focus at the state level is on what's referred to as EPR or Extended Producer Responsibility. So this is putting some of the owners back on the producers to make sure that their materials can be recycled or diverted or kept from disposal. Another key area the state is focused on is food waste reduction and recovery. So this gives you an idea at the state level that, again, a high diversion goal, they know they're not going to reach it by twenty twenty-four, but continuing to put some emphasis on food waste and also extended producer responsibility. State conducted a characterization study, and this is from twenty fifteen, but it gives you an idea of what is in the waste stream. So out of all of the waste that's disposed in Connecticut, you can see that paper is twenty-three percent of it. Not all of that could be put in a curbside recycling container, but some of it could be composted. So a big percentage of what's being disposed right now could be recycled or diverted. And then food waste is the second highest at twenty-two percent. So again, the main point here, based on the state's characterization study, is that there's quite a bit of waste that is being disposed right now that could otherwise be diverted from disposal. The bar chart you're looking at here is citywide, and this is per state data. So there are licensed haulers, there are private service providers that report data to the state. The city also reports some data to the state, so the state can put together this data on a citywide basis. I'm making that distinction on this slide because the next slide we'll look at is city managed. But I wanted you to see at a, at a citywide level, the, the recycling and diversion rates have been between fifteen and twenty-five percent citywide. And I wanted to contrast that with what the city manages. So again, this is not citywide, but just the, the material that the city actually directly manages, which is primarily residential. The recycling and diversion rates are usually between forty and forty-five percent. So again, with that city managed information, there's a higher recycling and diversion rate versus citywide, which predominantly means, you know, commercial material is, is outside of what the city is managing today. Just a quick overview on the taxing districts. There are, as you know, six total taxing districts. The, the city's contract for garbage covers only the fourth district. The city provides yard waste and bulk collection to the fourth district with city crews. And then the city contracts for recycling that, that covers all of the districts. So it's citywide residential recycling. The sixth district has its own contract for garbage bulk and yard waste. And then all the other districts can either subscribe with a private hauler, or they can drop off their garbage at the city's transfer station. And this table is just another way to present what I just covered on the previous slides. So everything you see in the red outline is what the city directly manages. So again, that's all of residential recycling citywide, and then the fourth district for garbage bulk and yard waste. Commercial collection is open throughout the entire city, meaning the businesses would have to subscribe for collection with one of the licensed haulers. And then again, the sixth district has their own separate contractor for garbage bulk and yard waste. So with garbage collection, that is picked up once a week in what's called a manual collection system today. And that's about eighteen thousand units that are receiving that service in the fourth district. And the transfer station received about twenty-two thousand tons of garbage in fiscal year twenty-three. That isn't all from those eighteen thousand units. That's, that's total garbage that came into the transfer station. Recycling, again, that's citywide. That's approximately twenty-two thousand, nine hundred units. And that's once a week collection with sixty-four gallon carts. So that uses automated collection, meaning the, the truck has an arm that can grab the car, tip it into the back of the truck, and then set the cart back down. So you just need a driver for those trucks. You don't need a driver and collectors for those trucks. Recyclables are weighed at the city's transfer station, and then they're delivered directly to a processor from there. And in fiscal year twenty-three, nearly eighty-five hundred tons of single stream recyclables were weighed at the transfer station. For yard waste collection, again, the city provides it in the fourth district twice in the spring, twice in the fall. And then the city operates a, a year-round site for yard waste to be dropped off. There isn't enough room at that yard waste site for any processing to happen there. So the material is hauled away by Win Waste for processing to be ground up, made into mulch. Then on bulk waste, again, the city provides the bulk waste collection two times a year with municipal crews in the fourth district. That requires six drivers and forty-eight collectors to help eight days out of the year. And again, the sixth district has the bulk waste collection as part of their separate contract, and that's offered one Wednesday per month. And then for the other districts, they can either subscribe to a private hauler, or they can bring it to the transfer station themselves. A whole lot of other interesting efforts going on in Norwalk. So textiles can be recycled through Help See, so residents can call for pickup on textiles. Mattresses in twenty-three, the, the city had three different drop-off events to recycle mattresses. Electronics can be dropped off at the transfer station. Household hazardous waste, there were six events for that in twenty twenty-three. Medication disposal, that's available twenty-four seven through the police department. Food waste composting, so there, the, the pilot program for food waste drop-off started back in twenty twenty. Residents can drop off at the transfer station or two other locations. Pop-up recycling events were added in twenty twenty-three through iRecycle. So that's where people can bring aluminum cans, glass bottles, plastic bottles, and get a redemption for those containers. And then last but not least, Christmas tree recycling. So across three weeks in January, public works crews pick up the, the, the Christmas trees for recycling as well. At the transfer station, this is to give you an idea of how many tons are moving through the, the transfer station. Again, it's city-owned, and then Win Waste is the contractor who operates the site. Residential and commercial vehicles can tip at the site. Yard waste is not brought here. That needs to be brought to the yard waste site. But again, you can get an idea of close to twenty-two thousand tons of garbage in fiscal year twenty-three, and about eighty-five hundred tons of the single stream recyclables were weighed at the transfer station as well. And then on commercial collection, as I mentioned, this is essentially an open market where any of the businesses would subscribe directly with one of the licensed haulers. So the, the, the only hand the city really has in the commercial collection is the licensing procedure. So we have very limited data on what's going on with commercial collection. So with that, I want to move into the key opportunities and issues. Kind of as we worked through that baseline and identified those opportunities and issues, it helped us highlight some potential strategies that we wanted to evaluate. We've got about ten of these that I want to walk through that's kind of gives you the high-level look at what we were looking at. I'll just mention that we did interview the licensed haulers. So there are eight licensed haulers in the city. We actually got ahold of five of them. The other three, we kept trying but never actually did get ahold of them. And then we also did a benchmarking of nine different peer communities. So that's some of the background of, of some of the work we were doing as we were evaluating these different options. I'm going to start with adding additional taxing districts in the garbage contract. The, the city's providing at least one service to all taxing districts, but it's not uniform across every district as we were just describing. And we thought there could be some economies of scale with a larger customer base. So we wanted to find out if, if we make, if we can make collection more efficient and at a lower cost by including all of the districts in there. The haulers we interviewed and, and the benchmark peer communities, it's all very common to have all of the residents in one contract. The haulers were in favor of including all the districts in one contract. It would make education and outreach more consistent across the taxing districts, and it could reduce the number of collection vehicles driving on the residential streets. So that's a, a safety issue. It's noise reduction. It's carbon emission reduction. If, if right now, today, you've got eight different licensed haulers, in theory, you could have multiple different haulers coming onto each street, depending on which hauler each resident subscribed to. So there's that economies of scale, the safety issue that we thought it was worth taking a look at this. The sixth district could not be included due to timing, and they've got their separate contract. But in the RFP, we did request pricing for future years to not just cover fourth district, but, but to cover the other districts as well. And this is something that common council could determine whether or not you want to add those districts in the future. But we did request the pricing. What we learned through the RFP is that the price per customer actually was the same. And in your case, it would be adding thirty-nine hundred units to the, the customer base. And so it didn't actually show the cost savings that we thought might be there, but it still would bring the more consistent education and outreach across all the districts and reducing the, the number of heavy vehicles in those other districts as well. Next, we wanted to look at cart collection for garbage. So you're already using carts for recycling. We know carts can improve the aesthetics and the efficiency of collection, and it can reduce cost with the fully automated style of collection, meaning the truck does all the work and you just need a driver. You don't need the driver and the collectors on the back of the truck. Most of the peer cities we benchmarked are using carts. We did include in the, the RFP and in this next contract, a standard size for garbage carts initially, but the potential to change to variable sizes in what's referred to as variable pay or pay-as-you-throw, a pay T system during the term of the contract. And the variable pay or pay-as-you-throw would mean that residents could choose the size container, and then the, the cost for that service would vary depending on how much of the service they're using. So it's a way to sort of align the garbage utility with water and electric, right? You, you pay for water based on how much you use. You pay for electricity based on how much you use. So it's, it's a means to try to sort of make garbage similar to those other utilities. It's also a benefit to incentivize recycling and waste reduction. So we wanted to make sure the contract included the option for that variable pay into the future. The new contract did reduce costs on garbage collection with the fully automated vehicles. So implementing a user fee, and this is actually very closely tied to the pay-as-you-throw or variable pay for the different sized carts. It's true that operating costs for maintaining a solid waste management system is increasing every year. Most of the peer communities that we benchmarked have a separate user fee. That's a very common practice in the industry. You would have to develop an accurate count and location of the customers, but that would give you the operational efficiencies, and, and you would need that for user fee. And in order to implement a, a pay-as-you-throw or a variable-based pay for the garbage collection, you would need a user fee. So this is a, would be a policy decision for common council, but a future consideration for a user fee. And again, that's very closely tied to that pay-as-you-throw or variable-based pay. We also looked at eliminating the current opt-out option. So right now in your ordinance, you do allow residents to opt out of garbage collection. They are required to provide proof of private collection if they opt out. But a precise number of how many residents have opted out wasn't known. Having that opt-out can kind of hurt that economies of scale when you're not sure what your customer base is going to be for the, the hauler that's picking it up. The current ordinance does specifically reference garbage collection, and we are suggesting to eliminate that opt-out, which would require an ordinance change. We also wanted to look for ways to reduce costs in curbside recycling. When, for a long time, there was revenue being received for recycling. So at one point, the city was receiving seventeen dollars and fifty cents a ton for all of the single stream recyclables that were collected. The reality of today is that you're paying seventy dollars a ton in a processing fee. Some of that's due to volatility of the recycling markets. Some of that's due to the cost of everything is going up. And the city doesn't currently charge for recycling. So again, when, when that started, you were actually receiving money for the recyclables. It was a revenue stream. It's now a cost. Cities should definitely continue with outreach to properly recycle. If you can minimize contamination, that always helps. But the reality is that it is actually costing the city now to have those curbside recycling program. There's other ways to expand other diversion programs as well, like expanding the mattress recycling and expanding food waste, which we'll talk more about in just a minute. And part of the contract that, that will be going into effect July first is working with the hauler to expand some outreach and education specifically related to contamination in the recyclables. Labor for bulky and yard waste collection, this was, you know, right now, the city provides that service with municipal crews. So there are four city employees that are fully dedicated to the services, but additional staff are needed for full coverage. Up to fourteen public works employees get involved with the bulk waste, yard waste, and Christmas trees across eight workdays out of the year. When we talked with the, the hauler back when we were doing the hauler interviews, the contractor was in favor of adding bulk and yard waste to the contract. It's also very common among the peer communities we benchmark to have the bulk as part of the collection contracts. Some even have additional charges for bulk. So in the RFP, we made sure to ask for pricing on bulk and yard waste so we could compare the costs to, to what the city spends with the municipal crews. And then it also would mean the city would no longer have to divert resources away from other city services, which was top of mind as we were evaluating this option as well. We also wanted to investigate how to attract different vendors for processing and disposal. You know that there's currently one contractor that covers the collection, the transfer station operations, and the processing. We wanted to investigate the possibility of having some separate contracts or at least attracting competition to the city, hence the RFP. Some of the peer communities do have separate disposal or processing contracts, or they're part of some kind of interlocal agreement, so the collection contract can kind of stand alone and separate from disposal and processing. But Norwalk is, is geographically limited on the number of facilities that would be feasible for disposal and processing. So the RFP allowed for the opportunity for competition. I think that process showed us that Norwalk is geographically limited on the number of facilities that, that are close enough that, that others could help with the, the disposal and processing side. We've also got the note here, the city should explore cooperative or collaborative agreements with other municipalities for additional services or programs. I know this is something city staff already participates in to some degree, but continuing to look for those opportunities to collaborate. We also wanted to explore opportunities to increase diversion. So the, the main point here is increasing recycling diversion citywide. You remember when I was showing you the citywide recycling diversion rates are much lower than city managed, so there's certainly room for improvement. There are opportunities to expand education and outreach. Again, the new collection contract will, will add some, a partnership with that hauler for education. There is the possibility in the next contract to implement a pay-as-you-throw program, which again can incentivize recycling. You would need a user fee approach if you wanted that variable pay or that pay-as-you-throw program, and the collection contract gives you that option. There's also opportunity to expand the existing mattress recycling program through increased frequency of collection events. And I know city staff is already investigating the possibilities here. And then there are other diversion programs that can be expanded. Namely, food waste. So according to the state, again, there's compostable organic. So that's not just food waste. That's anything that could be composted, but that makes up about forty percent of the waste that's disposed. So the city began a food waste diversion pilot program back in twenty twenty. And there are the transfer station and two other drop-off sites available for residents to drop off their food waste. Since twenty twenty, over four hundred thousand pounds of food waste have been diverted through that pilot drop-off program. At this point, curbside collection of food waste does not seem viable. It's, it's low volume, and it's typically lower participation rate, so it would be really expensive to have the curbside collection. But the pilot program has been really successful, and we do recommend making that pilot program for food scrap drop-off a standard program. Just go ahead and make that a city ongoing program. And then as the market matures and the customer interest grows, the city could go back and issue a separate RFP just for curbside food waste collection. We also think it'd be more maybe more viable or at least more affordable if you're continuing to explore those cooperative agreements with other municipalities. Consistently tracking customer counts and hauler reporting requirements. So part of the issue here is, you know, the haulers do register with the city annually for a license so that they can collect within the city. But they don't have to provide precise date on households and businesses. They're bringing tons to the transfer station, so you have an idea of the tons that they're collecting. But there's really not a whole lot of visibility into what's going on with commercial collection. When we interviewed the haulers, most of them were very much agreeable to adding reporting requirements to the licensing procedure as long as it wasn't proprietary. They've already got a report to the state anyway, so it it doesn't add a lot of burden. The ordinance language and then the just the administrative steps for licensing would need to be updated. But it would improve the city's knowledge on on what's going on, especially on the commercial side. So we thought it was important to at least consider updating and and adding some reporting requirements to the current licensing procedure. So the those were the main areas of of issues or opportunities we identified, the strategies we wanted to look into. All of that went into um how we shaped the RFP. So I just wanted to kind of recap what happened with the RFP for collection services on garbage. Right now, it's once a week manual. That'll go to once a week carts in the fourth district um beginning on July first of twenty twenty five. And then if common council approved, additional districts could be added. On recycling, there is really no change. It's still once a week with carts. With the yard waste and the bulk waste in both cases, again, we did ask for pricing if the the contractor was to take over those services. And again, initially it would be fourth district, and then if common council wanted to add other districts, those could be added as well into the contract. Some other aspects of the collection RFP, we made sure to highlight that the city has a goal to be the greenest city in Connecticut that came up in a few different places in the RFP. We invited proposers to describe any practices or initiatives on reducing contamination. We included some minimum requirements of what they'll have to do in the contract, but we we wanted to hear their ideas as well. We also asked them to describe any other means that they could help with um being the greenest city in Connecticut. And then describing any additional public education or outreach initiatives. Again, we had some minimum standards that had to be met, but we welcomed their ideas to expand on that. Um, and I'll just reiterate again that we included the option to implement the variable sized carts at variable pricing during the term of the contract. So the the results of that RFP, the annual cost for garbage collection, and this again changing from manual to carts at one point eight million is actually a reduction. So there was cost savings for going to carts. The annual cost for recycling collection came in at two point four million. The annual cost for the transfer station operations came down slightly, but essentially the the same cost at a little over nine hundred thousand. And then again, we did receive the pricing for bulk and yard waste collection so that we could consider adding that to the contract. So with all of that, I want to move into what is recommended, um what we intend to put into the strategic plan. We obviously want to hear your thoughts on this, but our recommendations for building that solid waste strategic plan. We've made this up into short term, which we're calling twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. Midterm would be twenty eight through thirty and then long term thirty one through thirty five. So I'm going to start with education and outreach related strategies. So this affects generation. All of us are waste generators, so we we need um the education and outreach to have an impact on the generation side. In the short term, we are recommending to implement the expanded hauler outreach that actually is part of the contract that goes into effect July first. But also exploring partnerships with additional local nonprofits for refurbishing reuse. And then the city could promote it on the website. So something like the Help See where you can recycle textiles. There may be other uh programs or opportunities like that that if the city can coordinate with those other nonprofits and then be able to help promote on the city's website and all the ways that the city promotes the programs. Midterm, uh it's updating the city outreach as new and expanded programs go into effect. So this could be if the mattress recycling gets expanded, um once the food waste pilot program becomes a standard program. If there are other materials that can be added. And then updating the city's approaches to outreach as new mechanisms become available. So this just means that there are new ways to reach people. You know, now we do it with social media and website and printed material. Just keep up to date with the best ways to reach out to the residents and to educate. And then in the long term, just continue keeping the information up to date and the way you're reaching out to customers up to date. Related to collection, in the short term, we are recommending revising the ordinance to eliminate the opt out for garbage. And that should be done prior to July one, when the new contract takes effect. Implementing cart collection, that is part of the contract that'll take effect on July one. So that'll happen uh for the fourth district. We're also recommending to add bulk waste to the contract starting July one. And again, that will help alleviate some of the the city resources that have been pulled into bulk waste collection. And we also are recommending increasing the reporting requirements for the licensed haulers. And and it's mainly to get a better understanding of what's happening in the commercial sector in the city. And then determine if additional districts would be added to the the collection contract. So then in the midterm, if you do decide to add additional districts, cart collection would be added in those additional districts. Again, that's if common council approves it. We recommend exploring the viability of implementing a user fee. And if a user fee is to be implemented, there would be, you know, some administrative things to figure out. So just determining the billing process. Would it become a special assessment on the tax bill? Would you want to partner with one of the utilities to add it to a monthly utility bill? Figuring out exactly how um the logistics of a user fee would need to to be done. And then long term, if a user fee is adopted, you could implement the pay as you throw or the variable cart costs. And again, that's a a means to encourage recycling. Then diversion and processing. So again, in the short term, make that food waste drop off pilot program a permanent city program and explore additional drop off sites. Explore the feasibility of expanding the mattress collection via drop off at the transfer station. And I know city staff is looking into this right now to see if that is a possibility. Explore grant opportunities for new diversion programs. The the federal government through EPA has a couple of grant programs that are specifically related to recycling infrastructure and recycling education. The state may also have some opportunities for grant funding. And then kind of an ongoing thing is monitoring those opportunities to add new diversion programs for new materials as markets allow. You'll see that in short term, midterm and long term. It's always keeping an eye on what's going on out there. New markets could form at any time, and you want to make sure you're taking advantage to to divert as much material from disposal as possible. In the midterm, you would continue to coordinate with other jurisdictions. Again, I know the city already does this to some degree, but looking for those cooperative agreements for collection and processing of additional materials. Midterm is when I think it would make sense to consider issuing an RFP for food waste collection. If expanded interest is evident and the cooperative opportunities are not identified. Um, and again, just keep up with monitoring other opportunities into the long run for other materials that could be diverted. So where we are now, our next step is to finalize the the strategic plan, and that essentially is an implementation plan. So it's step by step. What activities do we need to do? What's the timing of those activities? We anticipate bringing that final strategic plan back to common council for adoption in early twenty twenty five. Um, and just a reminder of the short term strategies that that are part of the contract that'll take effect July one. It's cart collection of garbage in the fourth district. It's some expanded outreach to reduce contamination of recyclables, and then bulk waste will become a part of that contract. So with that, I will open it up to any questions or comments.
Do you have any questions, comments regarding this presentation? Ms. Njuski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few things, um, starting with the contamination issue. So if we were to reduce our contamination of our recyclables, does that? Is there some um ability in the contract to renegotiate what we are paying for the recyclables?
With the the way the current contract is written, there's a charge for collecting, and then there is a processing fee, and then there is a revenue share. So to to actually go back and change how that's set up today, there isn't that ability. But having the the revenue share, having more valuable material provides more money in the form of a revenue share, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. So it would overall reduce our costs, um and the mechanism is through the revenue share.
Through the revenue share and I want to be careful to not imply too much here because there it it does cost more to process right now than the revenues being received. And to get to a point where you're kind of offsetting that again, uh I is not very likely right now.
Okay. Um, and how much more do we pay for garbage collection per ton than we pay for recycling collection per ton?
That's a really good question. Um, the 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 collection side of it, I know. And Vanessa, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, I may stop sharing my screen so I can look up. Let's see here. Vanessa, can you chime in on that with the processing cost versus disposal cost while I try to stop sharing?
Yeah, so um what happened is that on on the contract that we have, we pay uh two fees, right? So the one is really uh the collection and the other it will be the hauling. And then after that, we process. So um what we saw on the new RFP is that we are paying about a a hundred and five ton uh dollars per ton, if I'm not wrong. I I believe, but I I don't have the numbers right in front of me, so I'm happy to get back to you and send that. But that was based on what we approved the the new contract.
Okay, um, so the but recycling remains a significantly cheaper option for the city than garbage.
Oh, I understand the question. So what the may, yes, it is always better. That's why we're trying to implement even different uh recycling options. So we want to get solid waste. We want to reduce the solid waste out of our collection system. So we we offer recycling because even with recycling, we pay the hauling, we always have the opportunity on the revenue side. And then with the solid waste, that do not exist. Besides that, we never know how the market will play. Before was very profitable, the recycle. That's why the city went citywide with recycling. We're not, we do not know how, what will happen in five years. So that's why as of now, we have eighty percent uh revenue on the market value of recycling. So in other words, yes, we pretty much, it's almost the same at the end of the year. Looking at our operating costs from last year, we almost have spent the same amount of money on those two contracts.
And then in terms of the food composting, I certainly support the recommendation to make it a permanent program. Did you provide any recommendations for expanding? I I recognize that we're not yet ready to do curbside, but are there, were there recommendations or will there be recommendations regarding expanding the locations for drop off?
Yeah, and I I may have missed that part on the slide, but yes, looking for additional drop off locations to make it more convenient for more people. The the pilot program has been really successful though, based on just what you're collecting. So I'm, yes, it is in the strategic plan to look for additional drop offs. And then the other piece of it is looking for those cooperative agreements with other jurisdictions. That if you can kind of pool your resources, that there may be some kind of cooperative agreement that can let you go even further with the food waste. And both of those things are in the strategic plan.
Can you just provide a little more information about what you mean by that? So cooperative agreements to do what?
Well, and I know there's, I don't want to get the name wrong. It's the the Western Connecticut Alliance. I I'm not sure if I'm getting the name correct here. Okay, so yeah, so that that entity already has conversations going on, not just about food scraps, but about any of solid waste recycling, any of those diversion goals. That if there's opportunity to, um, you know, we also talked about maybe eventually you do issue your own RFP to do curbside. But there may be something that you can join in on that's already going on that could allow for some cost savings. So just looking at those opportunities of what other nearby jurisdictions are doing. See if you can piggyback a contract or get involved in a way that wouldn't make you bear all of the cost. Because I I do think it can be somewhat cost prohibitive to do curbside unless you've got a lot of of participants and and it's enough volume that it's really worth it. So that's all we meant by the cooperative or collaboration with other local jurisdictions.
And I mean, could that include things like public processing facilities? I mean, I wondered for a long time about our yard waste. It seems counterproductive to haul our yard waste out in order to bring back compost materials to use for our parks. So I'm just curious, I'm trying to get some more detail from you.
So then.
Opportunities that or people are.
Now, West Cog is considering an RFP and um to hire a consultant. We are um pretty much all the municipalities that we work together on hazard waste, uh they uh will be participating. So the consultant will first really um look in and try to understand uh which program everyone uh does and everything. So pretty much what New Gen just did just for us, there will be a consultant looking at uh the West Cog. I believe there was five or seven municipalities. We had a meeting with them about a couple of weeks ago. We told them that we are very interested in participate, but we do have a contract now, at least for uh eight years, that we are, we just as we are about to execute. But we are definitely um very interested in participate in other immediately on other options for food waste, uh bulk waste, yard waste, processing. And also that they are welcome to look and how we are set up our contracts to see if we can eventually, if this moves through an authority thing on how we can also make it uh more cost efficient uh to all those municipalities. So this is very initial, the RFP is still going to be issued by West Cog, but that's where we are when we are talking about uh other municipalities.
Great. I mean, that would all be terrific. It makes a great deal of sense um to pursue that, I would think. And then talking about the education piece. So again, I see you very general recommendations there. Do more outreach, use more media. What strategies have you all seen that have actually been effective? Do we have exemplars that you can provide to us of new municipalities that have successfully reduced their con contamination? How can we actually do more that really do do does get people to more effectively um, you know, do their recycling? And I've certainly heard of programs that do all sorts of things, including specific household by household incentives and other things. So I'd I'd love to hear some more specifics about what kind of things you're recommending.
Yeah, so one thing I want to touch on is in your contract, what the the hauler will do under this next contract is when they're um at the home and they're tipping the recycling cart, if they see contamination in the cart, they tag it. So that's some of that immediate feedback for the resident. Now, because it's automated, it's already made its way into the truck, but they will see through a camera what's coming into the hopper from the cart. So that the hauler's got opportunity to immediately educate, leave a tag on the cart to say, hey, this is this is what belongs in the cart. This is what does not belong in the cart. I also want to mention there are so far three reports that like the benchmarking. There were some things from the different communities we benchmarked that had some more ideas that we've included in the report. So there is much more detail through the reports that of other strategies that have worked. There are communities out there that do uh three strikes and you're out. So if you get tagged for contamination three times, they take your recycling cart until you take a class and learn how to recycle properly. So there's different opinions on that approach, but that is another approach out there that um takes. I'm going to go ahead and call it an enforcement hand in in getting contamination out of the recyclables. So um there are more details in the reports than that. Those are the ones that popped into my head specific to contamination.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Further comments or discussion? Ms. Smith.
Yeah, I would um just like to make a comment uh regarding um. And and I want to thank you, Vanessa, for um for leading uh New Gen to interview the small businesses, the small haulers that have been working here in Norwalk. I mean, I think, you know, we've talked around the tables, around, you know, and, you know, privately, publicly about moving toward the citywide garbage pickup, toward, you know, picking up those additional uh districts. But there's always been a concern about our small businesses, and I know they are less than they used to be. But I really appreciate you spending the time to talk to them and to include them um as we move forward to really improve how we do this. And um so, yeah, just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Further comment, discussion? Saying that, well, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you. Good night.
Hey, that brings us to item six A three. I will need a motion to go into executive session. This is Njuski-Eichner. We are an executives. All in favor? Opposed? Tensions, we are in executive session at eight forty four P M. Opposed, abstentions, we are in executive session at eight forty four P M. Okay, it is now nine ten. We are out of executive session. During executive session, no motions were made, no votes were taken. Ms. Smith, can you read item seven? The seven A three and move it forward for a vote.
That's Council President.
Oh, okay. Okay, correct person, okay, Council President, sorry. Ms. Young, would you do that?
Number three, authorization.
Six. A.
Six A three. Well, it's it's in our agenda.
No, 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 he was just telling me.
It's on our agenda.
Yeah, right here. Okay.
Yeah. Read the whole thing.
Read the, all right, okay. Six A Corporation Council. A three authorization. The City of Norwalk is hereby reauthorized to purchase, acquire, take and or eminent domain the following property. And further, that the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, or his designee, is authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements, documents and other instruments necessary to purchase, acquire and or take such properties. Count numbers noted. A portion of real property identified as portion of parcel A to be deeded to the City of Norwalk. Area equals forty four thousand three hundred and thirty eight square feet. A portion of lots eight and nine to be deeded to the City of Norwalk. Area four thousand four hundred and twenty six square feet. On and as shown in a certain map entitled Boundary Survey, parcel A and lots eight and nine. Scale. One equals three thirty.
One inch.
One inch. Inch equals.
One foot equals thirty feet.
One foot equals thirty feet dated October twenty third, twenty twenty three, prepared by Langen, Connecticut, Inc. On file in Building Management Department of the City of Norwalk to provide for right of way improvements, including removing existing site line obstruction by the modification of travel lane and reconfiguration of the intersection at the South Norwalk's, South Main Street, Meadow Street, Wilson Avenue, Meadow Street Extension and other right of way improvements.
In your movie, man? Hey, you want any discussion?
No discussion.
The item has been moved. Any further questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, Ms. Shanahan? All in favor? Opposed? It's nine thirteen, we are adjourned.